All the meeting for order. Roll call please.
Sorry, I'm trying to multitask.
Larry.
Larry Whitaker.
Yeah.
Sean Smalley. Joe Grossman.
Yeah.
Debbie Hamilton.
Here.
Michelle Sumner.
Here.
Lisa Woods.
Here.
Gary Daigle.
Here.
Okay. Introduction of media, do we have any media here this evening? Anyone that wishes to speak before the agency tonight on this subject, urban renewal. Will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into recorder. Forms are available on the sign in table in the back of the room. Please turn your cell phones off or mute. Announcement for Zoom attendees, if you're joining tonight's meeting. Via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and you'll need to identify yourself. If your full name is not already. Attached to the device. You will be unable to unmute yourself if you wish to speak. Use the raise your hand feature to to music click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen. And click on the image. Of a hand. Public comment, the first, the purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to. Present information or raise issues. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply and we have a new timer right there. All all citizens. Must come up to the microphone. So our.
We don't have any.
Okay. Our consent agenda is the meeting minutes from August fourteenth. I need a motion.
Make motion that we approve the minutes of August fourteenth.
Thank you, I need a second. Any discussions? Deanna. Vote please.
Whitaker.
Your. Oh, yes.
I figured that's what you meant.
Gary.
Molly.
Yes.
Grossman.
Yeah.
Hamilton.
Here, I mean, yes.
Sumner.
Hi.
Woods.
Hi.
Daigle.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Hey, first thing on the agency business is a grant application approval. For the North State Street Land Remat. Crystal.
Crystal Development, so the Urban Renewal. Conference actually had met on October eighteenth. On reviewing the application, which is turned into two. It was originally one application with two requests because we have the ability for facade improvement and the ability. For this location to incorporate. We broke the application out into two, this is for two forty-six North State Street. Lady Brown has state farm. Building and then this is the building to the north of that that she also owns and they want to open a. Very, a small neighborhood type land remat that. Would probably be utilized more by the immediate area and then have living quarters within that. And so it would kind of be that mixed use. And so we would recommend having a thirty-five thousand dollar grant for the facade improvement and twenty-five for the. Location.
So we need a motion.
I need a motion. Do the other paper in the green folder because I have two of them. It's not the one that I should.
You have two of these.
Does that have the.
Just just follow from number five.
Oh, I don't have the Google screen screens. So I need a motion, please. I make a motion to approve the two grant applications facade improvement in the amount of twenty-five thousand. And location of moving since the amount of twenty-five thousand for two forty-six North State Street for the amount, total amount of fifty-five.
Also, also.
Discussion. Yes, is the. Grant, the second part of that, after the top part. Who has the apartment building structure or is that a luxury board? The building with business, it's all one building.
So they will build or remodel the interior of it to accommodate for the commercial use and then they'll they'll build a. Residential component, which is about eight hundred square feet. They will build into five hundred square feet, but they'll build that into the residential. So they'll have to be building post for both.
So what part of that is how much they hold that in for the commercial piece of.
So the grants for the business portion, so the facade and there's one grant for the facade and one grant for the business.
So. Thank you. Hey.
Yes, eight hundred square feet and five twenty.
Is the grant being, is the grant being used for the building portion of the business portion or the residential portion? So the commercial, the commercial building. And anybody else? Vote.
Whitaker.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Grossman.
Hi.
Hamilton.
Hi.
Sumner.
Hi.
Woods.
Hi.
Daigle.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Reports and or discussions, you are depending report to the manager.
Yeah, it'll be really brief, so I were required to do an annual recording of our. Activities in Urban Renewal. So that's what this is. Just talks about how how we achieve what we achieve and where we're going in the future. There's a second document in there that I just wanted to close for your review for economic development. For the Sterns Lane, the new property owners have hired a marketing firm. And put together a real nice recruitment piece. And I just like, you should have that for your information.
That new one down here is is.
Great.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Good thing John Day for that, he's right there.
Anything else? Is that open yet?
Is it opening up?
John? Don't forget. They have seen a box. Once they're settled publicly. Okay, without further business, can you turn? It's about five minutes of the council meeting starts.
I will, I will talk really loud. Okay, I have a loud voice.
That'd be just kind of soft. That'd be just how soft I am.
So I can pull it up on my phone too. Here, so I don't know if you can, I need to. Did she?
I I did all the writing, but I only did everything.
Please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation and God, and each his role, with integrity and justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Daigle. That's good. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley.
Here.
Counselor Grossman.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods.
Here.
Mayor Sumner.
Here. Introduction of media, any media in the. Audience? Lots of friendly faces out there. Nice to see such a blast. So anyone wishing to speak before city council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form. And turn it into the recorder. Forms are available on the sign in table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting. And I think I'm at full capacity tonight. Announcement for Zoom attendees, if you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and you'll need to identify yourself. If your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself if you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. Use it, click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image of a hand. Reminder for council, speak into the microphone when talking so everyone can hear you. And speak, and please speak loudly so the whole room can hear you. I also want to make an announcement that this evening we will be having an executive session at the end of our council meeting. And then we'll be, we will be reconvening our council meeting after the executive session for anyone who would like to remain out. Public comment. The purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be a time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. And we definitely will be holding you to three minutes with as many comments as we have tonight. So the first one is Danny. And please give us your whole name and your address when you come up to speak, thank you.
My name's Danielle Velatin and I live in Hastings Village. And there are a few of us here that are here tonight, would you guys please stand up? Okay. These are my people from Hastings Village and I just want everybody to know we're, we are people just like you guys. And just because we're living outside and living in tents or in a shack doesn't mean that we are bad people. There are people out there that are, but there are a lot of good people here at Hastings Village. And I just want everybody to know that. We are, we we're just like you and we deserve the same treatment as everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Meyer.
Karen Meyer, eighteen twenty-six afternoon. I have three things to talk about, hopefully I'll get to them all. First of all, this three months ago, I found. Complaint the city about the mess out of Hastings Village. And a few days after that. Wayne Elsworth from Carhartt sent out. I noticed to everyone that if they didn't have it cleaned up within thirty days. Anything left outside was going to be discarded, so I'm going to be, hey, it's going to get cleaned up. Well, after thirty days, nothing happened. Basically, the Hastings residents just gave us a. Thumbs, you know, thunder nose at us. And no one. Wayne, as far as I know, or the city did not say anything further about it, so we still have the same problem. And it's an unsolved problem. The other thing is, I don't want to become a hub for the homeless. We're the only people, as far as I know, in Douglas County. Where they can come in and set up their tents. And stay for as long as they want and you're going to. I don't, you can explain that later. I don't. I I don't want to be the hub for the homes, I don't want all of the homeless of Douglas County ending up here. And I know that you said that you're following a model of in the Cottage Grove head, well. Cottage Grove is a small town like we are. And they were bringing in so many homeless that the people got fed up. And it ended up that the three, three members of the council, the last time I looked, checked. Were under the process of being recalled, so. That I think you should let the citizens decide. It's the citizens' choice. I read with some dismay that it's. That the mayor said to. The news review, it's a win-win for everybody. We had neighbors from neighboring neighbors. Neighborhood neighborhoods come up and have coffee with the mayor for, and talked for an hour and a half. About the impact on the neighborhood, about the stealing, about the people creating. Chaos and loud noises at night and. That's not a win-win. Plus, these people have lost their property values. They've had tens of thousands of dollars aloft in property values. Okay. So I know that there's good people out there from Hastings, I used to donate to Hastings. But you gotta do something about the ones you want.
Thank you. Mary Ann Anderson.
My, I implore. I have supported Hastings Village.
Can you say your name and your address?
Okay, I'm saying, Mary Ann Anderson, two six six three Gray Fox Drive. Anyway, I have supported Hastings Village over here. My church started taking food down there. I run the Hastings Village Facebook right now. And what that does, when I go down there to find out what contributions they need, I post it and then I pick it up. We have a storage at my church, so not a lot of the stuff goes down there. What I'm seeing, they're cleaning up that place, I've been down there Thursday. They're cleaning it up or getting the stuff out, the stuff the people don't pick up, it goes in the dumpsters. So these people are trying and a lot of people now, we don't take as much food down there because they're becoming self-supporting. So give them a chance, where are they going to go? What is there, we, they have one lady down there and she's probably in her seventies. The police took her in, she was sleeping on the street in in Sutherland in the rain with nothing. These people took her in, she's still down there, so give these people, I know I keep saying, give them a chance. But there are people working there, so they are getting on, Danny's doing an excellent job of taking care of the contribution, so. And Wayne is doing a good job cleaning it up, so Josh that passed away, he was helping clean up that stuff and he passed away because he was cold. He took some colds, went into a little house and he suffocated, that's how he died, so anyway, I support.
Thank you. Kevin Klein.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Klein, I live in Sutherland, I've been here four years and.
As you're asked.
Two oh one, it's the score. Yeah, down the street. While I'm deeply concerned about. Our community as a whole and how we as a community. Come around each other, we support one another, the Hastings Village, I'm not too familiar with, but I do drive bys every once in a while. And to your point, for those of you that live there, you are doing a good job of taking care of the place, there is been some transformational things I've seen. My bigger concern, I think, and maybe questions that are not answered is, who's taking care of the utilities or who's providing utilities? And anything of that sort at Hastings Village and who is paying for that? That's my only question for the night, I do have some concerns, like other citizens, about just keeping the safety. But when I do drive by, I've seen some, some increase of of activity. Good activity, it seems like. And it's off the beaten path, which is good, but I do have a greater concern as a citizen as to where my tax money is going. If it is indeed supporting this, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Meyer.
My name's Mike Meyer, I live eighteen twenty-six afternoon. In Sutherland. I have a, as a, as a retired contractor, I have a few questions on these sheds. These containers that you have put out there. First off, have they been inspected, actually, I don't want my answer taken, I don't want anybody answering. So I don't want to take away my time. Have they been inspected? And permitted for UBC and UNC and electrical plumbing, have they, have they been inspected and passed? For occupation? And then. As per the person that was affixated out there. These, these buildings have fire and smoke? Alarms, are there? Are the windows and that, are they big enough for somebody to escape if they had to? Is there proper ventilation in them? No. And. Are these, are these sheds and containers insured? Or is, actually, is the whole Hastings Village insured? Or damages and anything, well, just like homeowner's insurance, have they insured? And who, if so, who's paying for that, how much is it? And then I've seen. A truckload, maybe two. Of gravel going in there. And somebody else has seen some gravel going in there, have these, have these. Is that gravel going in there? Is that per wetlands for the state there? I know that's a wetland down there, has it been mitigated? Or what are you doing with the gravel in there? Because I don't think you can take gravel in on a wetland. Yeah, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Shepherd.
My name's Valerie Shepherd and I live at seven eight seven Hastings Avenue, I'm part of the village. A couple of things, I really like his questions, I agree with those, I'd like to know about some things too. And. I just want to point out that I've been in Sutherland since two thousand and seven, I bought my house with my husband on Eddie Street. Then it's right in the Hawthorne area, so I was. Surprised to see some of my neighbors opposing where I live now, considering that was one of you guys just a couple of years ago. I didn't ask you to personally to be homeless, I've been homeless for almost two years, December ninth, eighteen years. I am thankful for Hastings Village because as a single female, I was living in my Jeep and then my Jeep was stolen and I had no rest to save. I was living, sleeping under the awning at the grocery store. Because it was lit up and I was safe there. So the fact that we have fenced, we have barbed wire and chain link, I mean, it's might sound a little intimidating, but it's safe for somebody like me, it's safe for somebody who's single. And it's safe for my pet, who is my companion in season. There's pros and cons of the camp, I understand this. Pros, I'm safe, I get, I have made some good friends there, I have made some connections in the community that I think are detrimental to. The homeless people and I think we are making, we're breaking down with this, however, there are some cons as well and that is, you know, people that drive by where our tents are on fire and they yell, we're burn speakers. People should teach their children manners. And. I think that if you guys are going to approach this any further from here, that just, I just ask that you guys have some respect and some kindness because I don't want to be homeless either. That is the last thing I want to do. I do not want to be homeless for eight years over, I can see my house from the camp. And I see it every day with my daughter there and my husband and my kids, my other sons. So just have some respect and kindness when you're approaching this subject, man, because none of us want to be here, all of us would like to have a home. Well, okay, I take that back, there's probably some that don't want a home and that's okay too, that's their choice. So just find some compassion, it's coming up on the winter months and we're cold, so if you guys want to do anything, it's just a privacy fence. You guys don't have to start us because we're not an exhibit, we're not a zoo. And or give some blankets so we can stay warm, some gloves to our hands, they want to get hurts to be cold. If you have any questions, you guys can find me after the meeting, but thank you guys.
Thank you. Jean Colwell.
Evening, my name is Jean Colwell, I live eighteen twenty-two afternoon. And I'd like to know, I know those people need help and we'd like to help them and we are compassionate. I don't know our family, thanks for my permission. Thanks to a friend of ours. Try to do whatever we can. What I'm interested in, what are the solutions to solve problems with people? Are they getting help to find jobs? Are they getting some training to find jobs? How about if they took those little homes that got a blueprint of how they built a little home and build them? We got, I was an electrician for fifty years. So we could get people like me to help them with the electrical, folks to build that thing, it's not tough. And I'm sure there's, there's all kinds of tradesmen in our, in our city who volunteer to do this. Why can't we do something like that, that helps them out, that gives them a trade, at least one thing, it gives them. I forget what I want to say there, but anyway, it helps them out to get confidence. So if we can do things like that, what, what is the city doing to do things like that? That's where our money should be going, is to help the most people out so they can get out of that life if they want to. And I'm there, you can call me up anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Brock.
I don't know if I could follow that. My name is Terry Brock, I live at four oh three Fairway Estates, we just moved up there, so brand new. So this is not a little problem that we have and this is not a problem that's going to go away, this is a nationwide problem. And I'll tell you what. I'm just a good old conservative Doug's County and things being voted different. But when we vote for people that mandate things into being laws and bills and so on, kind of stuck with it. We're not happy with it, I'm not happy with it. I had the opportunity to go down to the camp and look around. Looked at a couple of other camps. And the simple fact is, is there is no easy solution, but there has to be something better than what's going on. I think that there could be some steps to help the people that want help, want to be helped, people that want to do well. People that want need a hand up, I'm all for that, but if you don't want a hand up, you're not getting a hand from me. And I think that a lot of people probably feel that way. I think we, if we put our heads together, we think about this as a community and come up with a solution and not a solution that's a big open door. Because we also understand this too, that if you build it, they will come. And if the word's out that Sutherland's taken them. There's, there is no end to that. I think we started with six and it's grown. And I think that that might be a concern from a lot of people. So with that, some rules to this, some order to it. A plan, what is the plan? I know right now we're kind of on our heels. And you're right, it is, it's turning winter time and things are going to get really ugly. So I think if we put some effort into a solution and we take it our own, we take care of our community. And not be a wide open door to, to the whole county and the whole state, then that could be a little bit more feasible. Thank you.
Dan Bartra.
My name's Dan Bartra, one one five North State Street. Just want to connect what Terry said. I think if we can control and monitor who's actually coming into that space. And then everybody goes there, says they're Sutherland residents, well, that's not. We all did our work, did some research on it, that's not what's happening. It's like, it's become, it's like, this is kind of a cool space. But I agree, I think I agree with Terry, let's, let's monitor it and see and take care of our own. I'm a business owner downtown, this, the Hastings Village has been. I'm a business owner downtown. Uh, this, the Hastings Village has been huge for helping downtown. Um, and we need to continue. Like, yeah, our support, uh, to move in the right direction. And just make it more accessible, but again, to our local. Thank you.
Gary Second?
Gary Fattness, one one nine west central. So follow those guys three hundred percent. Um, if you look around, two years ago, I had people sleeping in my awning, people sleeping in the bench outside my business, outside their doors. Very frustrating, couldn't do anything about it. Hastings Village opened up. They have a place to go, got them out from under my awning, got them out from under, in front of my store. And honestly, it feel like it cleaned up downtown because they actually have a place to go. That being said, it is a place for Sutherland residents. Um, you go to Roseburg, there's tents on the street. You go to Portland, there's tents on the street. You go to Reno, there's tents on the street. Sutherland, there's no tents on the street because they have a place to go. Uh, same with, uh, you know, Arizona, I was just in Arizona recently. Phoenix has a place for them to go. There's not a lot of homeless people you see in Phoenix. They're, they have a place to go. So with a little monitoring, a little, little vetting, I think Hastings Village could be something that benefits Sutherland. But at the same time, it has to benefit Sutherland. So we should be a shining example for Roseburg. Have them have their own Hastings Village. Let them house the people from Roseburg. And we'll focus on people from Sutherland. If they have jobs, if they work in Sutherland, welcome. But if they're just here to have a free place to live. Then they don't belong here. They can go wherever they need to go. But I do think that it's helped downtown and we should improve it and make it better. And also they have to be accountable too. If they, they should be accountable for themselves, making sure it's cleaned, making sure they do respect the rules and the laws. And then they'll be accepted. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. On to presentation, uh, homeless response team and Uncle Heart progress update. Start with Pat.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Sumner, President Hamilton, counselors, staff and citizens and all our audience members. I'm Pat Lynch. I'm speaking as the, uh, on behalf of the village and our, on our efforts here. As the Director of Livability Services. Uh, Captain Kurt Swanson and Wayne Ellison, the President of Uncle Heart. Been asked to make some comments following mine. I will try to be brief, relatively speaking. And perhaps later we can schedule a full-blown town hall, so this can be more adequately explored. But for tonight, I'd like to outline and review the landscape of where we are with housing and homelessness in Sutherland, as I see. As many know and many may not, through the federal court system and Oregon legislation, our city's been handed an unfunded mandate. Yeah.
Do you think you can either sit up there or talk or something over there? They can't hear you in the background.
We're gonna hear.
Thank you.
I probably have the microphone. It sounds like a drop over there. Anyway, as, as I think most of us know, some don't, uh, we're working under an unfunded mandate. We've been required by the courts to behave in certain ways and provided no funding. We're given, uh, really when it's all boiled down, three choices as to how we manage our homeless population here. One is to do nothing. And that's to allow camping, sleeping, congregating with no controls. We saw some of that a couple of years ago. Uh, option two is hurting the homeless. Creating regulations about where, where not, and when camping can occur, and then tasking someone with issuing citations. Following regulations and creating them. Hurt control and management, if you will. Or the third option is overdue, that's designating a place where camping is allowed with few or no barriers to its use. This third option has been our choice for the last two years. Every city with a homeless population that I'm aware of started with option one. I don't know of any city or town where doing nothing has worked. In my opinion, hurting the homeless, option two, is practiced very commonly on the West Coast. Has not solved any of the root problems or reduced homeless populations that may have in fact have increased them. Moving our homeless populations around has shifted enormous resources that are used and more needed elsewhere. And has particularly in population centers, grown the problem and numbers of homeless folks who were left to roam during the day. We are trying in our small city to create an environment that allows a path out for those who are able to accept managed health. And can, to some degree, help themselves. Broadly speaking, Hastings Village residents are locals. A small fraction are not. The little barrier camp designation points to the necessity of throwing as few barriers as reasonable in the way of using the camp. This will, this may always mean that there will be a few out-of-area campers in transit. But then, our hope is that most all will be transit and move on to better life situation. A reasonable, serious voice tonight, often expressed concern for our camp has been, if you build it, they will come. It's a concern and a valid fear. In our experience here and in consultation with a number of other cities of similar size and situations as ours. This has not proven to be the case. Our numbers have fluctuated, but they have not shown continuous growth and have settled at about thirty-five. The few of you who have actually walked the village and those who have driven slowly by on a winter's day, will I believe that Hastings? Will agree, I believe, that Hastings Village is no field of dream. Our recent cleanup and trash removal has made a significant improvement. Maybe someday it can be a field of hope. A few other critics have objected to what they see from their viewpoint as the city pandering to the comfort of the village residents. And they're drugging me. Pandering is an interesting word. My dictionary says that pandering is the act of catering to or profiting from the weaknesses, vices. Or unreasonable desires of others. Hastings Village is populated by a complex, diverse, less fortunate group of folks who are pretty broken. Lost, addicted, damaged, and some of them ill. I suppose with a jaundice eye, you could accuse us of pandering. Catering to the very basic needs of human beings in trouble and in danger. But catering to profiting from weaknesses, vices, or the unreasonable desires of others. That's a conclusion I don't think any reasonable person could reach. Someone associated with the whole pandering issue, in that pandering is associated with profiting from another's weakness. Is the belief that somehow some of those who are actively involved in this are just maneuvering to land, land some cushy job. Which is an interesting word too. Let me just say this, there is nothing cushy about homeless. The massive homeless industry our nation has created is only peripherally involved in what we're doing here. Hastings Village is a completely homegrown solution at this point. Made possible only through the efforts of this city, incredible volunteers like Wayne Ellsworth and his board. Many local churches, nonprofits, and their volunteer. So then to the money, what's all this we hear about grants? Are we seeking grant funding for our homeless and houseless folks? Absolutely yes. Has the city received any funding from any source? Not a dime. We continue to work with Senators Merkley and Wyton in hopes that approved congressionally-directed funding will pass Congress, be signed, and eventually come to the city. Maybe next year, they say. We are working with Uncle Heart's Board of Directors in search of funding to staff our village to make it safer and more secure. We have established new relationships from our city with our state senators and representatives and have asked repeatedly. As recently as today, for inclusion in legislation to provide funding here. We have joined initiatives sponsored by the League of Oregon Cities, the Mayor's Association, the City Managers Association and others. To direct funding to local grassroots operations and away from inefficient agency. We need to quit rewarding failure. Your city's meeting with state and federal housing agencies to identify opportunities to partner with and bring workforce housing. To a city with too many no vacancies on it. Human nature is fascinating. When a troubling, complicated, unwanted issue like this arises, we all want our say. We all want to know everything. We all want a quick, easy, elegant solution to problems that look unsolvable. If such a solution's found, we are dazzled, we are amazed and relieved. When no such solution appears, we complain. It's natural. But sometimes complaints can lead to solutions. We need to keep ours out. I, I guess I just want our citizens, all of you, to know, the city staff, your council, Wayne and his volunteers. The Hastings residents are all trying to put together and keep together the best solution for our current su- situation as possible. And this with no financial help from our state or federally. I believe we have been and will be flexible and open to change and better solution. But it's also true that it's better to be a part of the solution than a part of the problem. I invite you, if you have a better solution that's moral and legal, don't be bashful. I will also observe in closing. That this, this issue tonight is the basement level of a skyscraper-sized problem. We have a homeless problem we're attempting to address. We have more homeless students than we have homeless adults. We have families that are teetering on the brink of becoming homeless. We have folks who have nothing but a home on wheels. We have families living in tiny quarters they can barely afford. We have too many employers who can't hire new and replacement employees because there's nothing to buy a rent that they can afford. We, we are building housing and apartments, all at market-level rates and costs were higher. We are in the middle of an enormous state and nationwide shortage of housing. We desperately need to be part of the solution. It's easy to be part of the problem. Takes work and dedication to be part of the solution, and I believe we're up to it. Captain Swanson, if you have a moment, we would like to, uh, hear a little bit about our police force's view on what we're doing here. One second, Tim. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Well said. Mayor, member of the council, for having us here tonight. I am Kurt Swanson, Jerry. Uh, Kurt Swanson from Police Department. Um, so I'm on the council, uh, the homeless council. We meet probably every other Friday. Uh, Wayne, Pat, Melanie, Jerry, myself, Aaron. Um, and I told the story before and Jerry loves it when I tell it because, um, it's a story of him being right, me being wrong. So years ago, when, you know, the homeless crisis really, you know, was, was reaching a, a head. Um, we used to, about every morning, about sunrise, we would get a call of someone sleeping on some porch. Or in the parking lot of a store, or, you know, somebody's back porch, somebody's backyard, something like that. And, um, Jerry really wanted to set up a camp because the, you know, the, the, the Ninth Circuit made the ruling. And, you know, we, we had to do something. Jerry wanted to set up a camp and I, I thought to myself, that's crazy, just let us do our jobs, let police officers handle it. Um, and it was, it was literally every single day, every single day, just about seven o'clock, seven thirty, we would get that call. And, uh, when we set up the camp and homeless people started utilizing the camp. Instead of people's, you know, storefronts, uh, backyards, um, that problem went away. Um, we don't have those calls anymore. We rarely have calls about, uh, homeless people in the community. Very rarely. Um, we do, you know, so let's talk about problems at camp. We do have problems at camp. There are some. And we handle them. And Wayne and myself and, and, and a select. You on our, on our police form, Wayne has our cell phone number. He calls us all the time. Not all the time, probably, probably, probably once every two weeks. Not all the time. To me, it feels like it's all the time, cause Wayne. Probably once every two weeks and, and, uh, but they're minor problems for the most part that we, we navigate through. That we, you know, with, you don't want us managing the camp. And I've said this all along, you don't want the police force managing the camp. That is not our job. Um, that's like the military, you know, moving into a town and, and trying to manage a town. You can't do that. Don't want that. You have to have somebody like Wayne and Uncle Heart doing that job. And the way we handle it is that it's, it's like an apartment complex. You know, you have a manager of an apartment complex. You have residents of that apartment complex. And if you have a problem there, you call us and we'll come and we'll try to work through the problem. Um, there have been problems around the camp. There have been some laws that were broken. You know, by associations of the camp in the area and we've handled it. You know, there are gonna continue to be problems. There are. Uh, the, the, the people who are living there, you know, um, they have their issue. That's why they're there. Um, and I feel bad for them. I do, but, you know, everybody in here has their problems. Everybody in here has. An issue that they've dealt with in their past. Um, most of us just have really good resources. Most of us have help. Um, you know, a lot of people living down at the camp. Um, some of them, you know, some of them really need someone to manage their daily lives. So yes, there are gonna continue to be problems. Um, we have open communication. Um, and as far as the, you know, as far as the calls that we've had in the past, uh, those, those early morning calls, we just don't get those. So, um, Jerry was right. I was wrong. I said it again. Thank Jerry for taking it safe from. Thank you.
Wayne Ellsworth.
Me Ellsworth, three five five, South Caliponia, this mayor, city council, city manager. People watching from home and all these beautiful people here. I am just so overwhelmed and so grateful for the passion that Sutherland can see. This doesn't happen anywhere else in Douglas County. People coming together to talk about these kind of issues is very, very uplifting. And I'm very proud to be part of this community that you guys put this together. It's unbelievable. I was asked today to, to come out and give a, give an update on Hastings Village. Mainly just to tell you guys where we're at and potentially where we're going. And I do want to say that I have been wrong more times than right, many times in my life. And I've had a lot of great spirited conversations on, on Facebook and other media about how wrong I can be. And I'm, I totally understand that. There has been promises that were made because I thought I could do things. When you're working with volunteers, like a majority of people are, you guys volunteer all over. That's. One thing I've noticed about Sutherland with the amount of churches and city projects and stuff, everybody loves to volunteer around here. You can understand that volunteers, sometimes bringing together, can be hard to accomplish certain tasks. For a person that, and I'm totally making excuses right now for myself. Working full-time, having a business on the side, you know, plus helping run a nonprofit, being the president of this. You know, being a volunteer, I do donate all my extra time to this effort. All my extra time. That means sometimes missing kids' basketball games. That means sometimes not going to a theater presentation, those kind of things because I believe in it. And luckily I have a wife that understands it. Cause we have been volunteers in this city for the last five years until we retired from the local fire department. We understand, seven years? That's why my wife is here to remind me. So. Well, yeah, to answer some of the questions, but give you an update on how things are. We have actually been, like everybody said, we have been hovering around that thirty-five mark. What you guys don't know is there's another fifty people on the streets that you don't see. They mentioned war too about, um, Sutherland with the homeless crisis, about our more children being homeless than adults. As of twenty twenty, let's see, it was twenty twenty-three January, we found out that there was over seventy-five homeless children in the Southern School District. They must have homeless parents, too. Plus, with the RV mandate that we have going through town, you know, we found out that there was over a hundred and twenty families living in RVs on people's property. At any point, those people can become homeless. At any point. But we've been staying around the thirty-five mark. And yes, when Pat was talking, there has been people from other towns that do come through. But it's not because we built this beautiful thing out of Hastings. I mean, everybody will tell me right off the bat that it's not a beautiful site. I've been told many times. But we did haul four yarder dumpsters out of there full of trash. And that wasn't all me. It was all those people that are here tonight from Hastings Village and more. On average, I would have about fifteen people helping me out of the village clean up their own stuff, mainly because they had the ability to do it. They don't have a dumpster that can hold enough trash for thirty-five people. We don't have the ability to get a bigger one. So in essence, that's why we have some trash out there. Plus, we have a lot of beautiful volunteers in this town that want to bring everything in their garage out there. I mean, I haven't done it yet. I was thinking about it. But like I said in the beginning, like, we would, we kind of, people who are housed have different means to be able to hide their belongings. People out there do not. So that's how you get to see some of those things. But when it gets to a point, I need to be reminded that we need to clean it up. And I was very fortunate that a lot of people helped me, remind me that I needed to clean it up. So we took our time and we made a promise that we would have a stipulation in place that we would have it cleaned up by September thirteenth. That didn't happen. Came out another month. I made sure to rent dump trailers. I brought trucks out there. I brought people out there. We had tons of volunteers. We did the best we could. And if you can see it where it was before and what it is now for the people that haven't driven by, it looks a hell of a lot better than it did before, and it's going to continue to get better. Because we've got really great volunteers that are continuing to clean. We have another dumpster going out there. We're going to clean that up. And some people noticed that there was dirt coming out there. There was some rock that was laid out there. The rock that was laid out there was to extend the walk, the right-of-way there, and it does fall within the wetland ordinances of what we can develop on. And what we want to do is we want to be able to get the people out of the water. Because last year, we had a really hard time with the amount of water that we got, that we lost a lot of the material that people were donating when it comes to tents. So we had to build pedestals or platforms to get people out of the water. But then we couldn't really anticipate, you know, when there's a lot of water coming and the amount of rats that come out of the ground. I mean, thousands. And they scare me to death. Yes, they are huge, and we tried our best to mitigate that. So if someone says that, you know, we're developing a place where, you know, people are, you know, want to be there as this beautiful thing, it's really not there. You know, we want to be able to build micro shelters, like the two little cottages that are out there, and put them on that raft rock path so we can get people out of the tents. And that leads us, you know, to the part of conversation where a lot of people, you might not know, but this is phase two of the Southern and Uncle Heart project. Phase two is to be able to get people in a spot where they feel comfortable to the point where they want to accept change. One of the hardest things to do when a person is homeless is to trust other agencies, other people. Because they have been broken, like Pat was saying. Some people are broken. Some people do have extraordinary mental health issues. They do, and they can't take care of themselves. But what we wanted to build is a completely boots-to-the-ground, organic process where we can develop a place with very little money because we are not getting any from state or federal agencies. We wanted to be able to do it on the backs of volunteers because we knew that Southern could handle it with their volunteers. Once a person gets into one of these micro shelters, whether it be the container, whether it be the little shed, micro shack, whatever you want to call it, they are entered into a program of care. Right now, we have thirteen people living in the nine pods that are out there. And within two weeks that they have been in there, we've already housed our first person. I didn't do it. But we permanently housed somebody that could not take care of themselves. That person was dropped off by BPA a year ago with nothing on her doorstep. And these people took that person in, escaping domestic violence, gave that person the tent, tried doing their best for a year until appropriate services came along, and now she's out. These are the things that we get to do by putting people in a place and giving them appropriate services. We have great partnerships with Adapt, Uncle Health Alliance, and HIV Alliance that come by multiple times a week to be able to offer their resources, whether it be substance use, whether it be therapy, whether it be peer support, case management, harm reduction, whatever it might be, just so we can plant seeds that people may want to be able to take that step and get out of houseless. And we've been seeing really, really good results. It may not look like it from the road. You know, some people like to squeal their tires going by and yelling at people and stuff, but it may not look like it from the road, but what's happening inside is the beautiful. And we've only been able to do that because of the will that this city has when it comes to, we're not going to stand for this stuff. We're going to take care of our people. And none of the other cities are doing it. So Terry came by a couple of weeks ago. I showed Terry Brock the village and stuff, and we were talking. He asked a lot of really great questions. And we talked about what is it going to take to get people work-ready? Well, we're almost there. We have a shower trailer now. It's my original shower trailer that the United Way bought me. Now people can shower every day as long as I buy a propane. I forget sometimes. But now they can shower. They have a place that's stable that they can, that they can stay and be, you know, at least a little bit more secure. They can get transportation through Adapt to be able to go through peer support. And now we're working on a bus stop so we can actually further that more so people can go up and work. We've had a lot of people that have worked full-time and just lived in tents. That's got to be hard. I don't even know what that looks like, but people are doing it. So I guess, in conclusion, what we're looking at in the future is to be able to develop this idea that a small town like Southern, who has under ten thousand people, which a lot of the reason why we can't get a lot of the funding is because we're small, can take a good chunk of people, good volunteers, barely any money whatsoever, and make it work. Because realistically, when you look at the numbers, if you want to just look at the numbers, so far, Uncle Heart has received seventy-five thousand dollars from Uncle Health Alliance to be able to build this second phase, which are those pods, those storage container housing units. We get twenty-five thousand dollars left. The city has invested some time, energy, and some good money to be able to be helpful to develop this initiative. But it isn't the millions and millions of dollars that have gone into the town next door. Or the millions to a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars per day in Portland that's going out for houseless. We are doing it on literally nothing. We have no full-time employees. We have no grants to hire full-time. We are in a spot where we've been able to do this because those people that live in Hastings, they want to get out, they want to work, and they want to work together. We have right here, you know, the chair of the council. We have security here tonight, and we have a couple of really great advocates. Those people have been holding that place together for two years. You can say that I've done this. I have not. I've been there to support, do the best that I can with the time that I have, which is few and far between. But those people that are living out there, they're the real people that are building this initiative, and they're the ones that created this community, and I can only see it getting better. So with your support, the ideas of maybe starting a council to be able to take all these beautiful ideas that you guys had tonight to create something bigger, I am totally for it. So it'd be really nice if we can have those conversations down the road, but that's really what I got for any kind of update. Good?
I know, Sam.
Okay, on to consent agenda. October ninth, two thousand twenty-three, never motion. Have a motion and a second, please, discussion.
Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
On a council business or seismic contract award.
Mayor, council, community development. So as you're probably all aware, the city was awarded a, I'm going to give round numbers, two point five million for the fire station number one and the police station for seismic improvements. And so we sent out an RFP requesting proposals. We received two by those that showed up for the site visit. It was a mandatory site visit that we held. With the team that we had put together to review the proposals, we directed selecting DPS engineering and architecture. And so with that, there are amounts that were indicated in the grant applications as it breaks it out would be for three hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred dollars and three hundred and fifty-seven thousand three hundred dollars for the engineering, architecture, and construction management services for the seismic portion of the grant. The construction will come at a later date, but then they won't exceed those people. We would ask it, we won't work that grant.
Make a motion to approve contract to ZCS Engineering and Architecture in the amount of, and not to exceed three hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and in the amount of, and not to exceed three hundred and fifty-seven thousand three hundred for engineering, architectural, and construction management services for the fire and police departments, seismic rehabilitation as presented. Any discussion?
Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
On to the winter application approval.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Kirk Torrance from the Police Department. This is a OLPT change of ownership for off-premises and limited places, limited on-premises licenses for the sale of alcoholic beverages at Center Markets, number forty-five. This is the old Smithy, so it's a change of ownership from Smithy basically to Center Market. The police department has found no information that would be viewed as disqualifying by the OLC. And your options are, number one, to provide OLC recommendation that this license is to be approved and granted. Or number two, find OLC a recommendation that this license is not to be approved.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve. Any discussion? The sale already done?
Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
On the reports, LOC conference report. That's for bliss.
Yes, I would. The conference was great. There was a lot of opportunity to see what was going on throughout the state for counselors and elected officials. We had the opportunity to participate in different seminars. But it was really eye-opening. I had a real insightful opportunity to tour the fire station in G. It was really cool to see the command center and see how things run in a bigger, larger area. And they actually don't operate on like, you know, the bigger cities having many, many employees. They don't have as many employees as you think they do. They still operate on some of their volunteers, like often leaving here. But it was really eye-opening to see a lot of people trying to get information and, you know, make good positive changes in the community and kind of communicating together. So overall, it was a really good event to be able to attend.
And I second that. I also thought that they spent a lot of time talking about homelessness. To kind of second on all of our presentations, homelessness is a, not only a national problem, it's a big state problem. And it was really interesting to hear what different cities around the state are doing, different size cities, and kind of hearing just the different off-the-wall things that they do by taking different buildings and turning the housing options. And so it was really interesting just to hear from different people of all the neat ideas. So I think we have the best plan so far, and not too many cities are following what we're doing. And we are able to share our ideas with the other cities. It is a pretty big problem throughout. City manager report. Correspondent construction update.
So we've kind of tried to put as much detail in your staff report as we could, so you've probably all seen it. We have run into some delays, but, you know, with the sad news, I'd like to point out the happiness, all of how far work has come. You know, we're right now five ramps that were circulating between, I believe. And so as we filter through them all, all the little details of each one of those, we've got a lot of play equipment installed, the parking lots prepped, we've got concrete poured, the restaurants, pavilions are up. The list goes on. We have run into a few pickups, which every construction project does. There, right now, because of the delay in our wetland permit, it kind of gave us a little bit of a setback, which the domino effect with the play equipment, the weather needing certain temperatures for the course of physical work right there at the deadline, and unfortunately, running into a couple other discrepancies, we ended up postponing that. So we're hoping to get back on track in the spring, and that way we will be complete anticipating July of twenty-four.
I think we're still doing.
And we'll be meeting with the contractor, kind of going over the details as we move forward and what the money looks like.
Will it be doing any of the trails throughout the winter?
Or does that have to wait till the spring as well? It'll wait till the spring because it'll get too mucky, and then they'll either destroy additional wetlands or it'll cost a lot to lay a temporary act.
And Jim Hausman? There you are.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Jim Hamilton, President of Port One. With the, there's officially have a one-page spreadsheet. With all the numbers. If you want to, uh, write it through here. Everybody on the same. About casting around Wayne. So the working grants ten years means that.
Do you have one more?
Right there.
Okay, this is a great. Much great part of ability, all your life, volunteers, in a segue right, I'm gonna segue right into that. So what you have, uh, have before you, just a snapshot. This is the, the seven capital improvement grants. That the friends of Port One, uh, basically written these grants and presented those. To the different grant committees with city staff. The top two, top two rows, you'll see phase one. The top two rows, phase two, what we're currently working. So we're in our tenth year. The partnership. And what was originally slated to be a twenty year, if you got lucky, to complete. All the things of what's gonna be done. We are providing five hundred, that's to be in the throes, right? So we're twice as fast as what the original master plan. That's exactly what we get down. So. We've come a tremendous way and I want to try to bring it back to is, yes, we've accomplished a tremendous amount. And I think as we move forward here, the, the key word I want to get across. Focus on is appropriate maintenance, that each one of these grants. These seven grants. There was a resolution to apply. To be, to be have, you know, the resolution to accept the grants and then during the presentation. Before each of these different grant pages. Um, that question always came up. It was addressed by city staff, whether it was either Christie or it was, um, Ryan. Just a question, the question was, what is the city's commitment? The maintenance going forward with. And it was always an affirmative, we will provide the appropriate maintenance. And I think that's, that's what we as the principles ponder struggle with a little bit. Because that's what happened in phase one, we had some vegetation die offs. Um, in the bioswale, we had a tree and some shrubs. Whether it was sprinkler lines or. What, I'm not sure, but we had, we had mortality for vegetation and then as space. Um, phase one parking lot, we had a tree died, apparently it came from the sprinkler system being shut off. Part of this base construction, we had, we always had very warm, warm weather. Summer, I get it, stuff happens. Stuff happens. Plants die, it gets hot. But the question is. When are they gonna be replaced? Yeah. In this case of, of one. That was done in twenty twenty. So as you, as you move into your. City budget. For the next, next year. And you start looking at your council priorities. I would ask that you. Really focus on that. If we have a, as you can see there, we have a three point two million dollar capital improvement project out there. That really needs to be. But I mean, that's, that's the commitment. That the city made. And from our, our standpoint, we just need to step it up. And there's, there's also instances of, uh. The ongoing construction, up a lot of dirt. In the parking lot and the rain has basically pushed that dirt up to the curb. For now, when it rains, the water going out to the drain actually backs up. Because there's so much dirt that happens, mud. Long that brain, when people even get out of their car, they have to cross through that. But it's just, you need to have a greater presence on those sort of things. Need to identify park metrics for not only this facility, but. I mean, why? What, what's required of there? I'm not trying to, I'm not gonna dictate staff departments. That, that's what. These folks, I don't have that expertise. I'm just gonna tell you that I don't think we're needing the appropriate maintenance. So however we get there, it would be great. It's really, really important. Now we have. The restroom. I'm not sure if. I've heard that, that the plan is to leave one or two of those stalls open. Is that, that gonna happen this winter? Or if you step back. Okay, so I, I bring that up because that's another staff commitment. Do we have resources to deal with that, Aaron? There's a voice to me that he, he does, but it is, it will be another resource. Step. One of our key volunteers back here, and Michelle, you may remember, Tony, let me ask you to raise your hand. Tony Groza back there, you presented him with the volunteer recognition last year. Him and a cadre of other volunteers are really what is keeping that parking lot. In as good a condition as it is, but it can still be improved. Very good. So thank goodness that he's out there. He puts in a thousand hours a year.
I say more than that.
And. Well, that's nice of you. So, but they can't do it all. Our role has always been to do the light lifting. He makes the circuit around pond, he doesn't use those trap cans or. He helps with picking tables. And he needs to greet, he's an ambassador for the city, answering questions for what's going on at the park. What, what can I do? What can I do to that? But he doesn't have. He doesn't have physical well-being to do with his heavy build. Not a, not gonna do shit, definitely. He's just told me, he's getting tired. So we need to get those trees replaced, we need to get that landscape, we need to come up with a plan, we need to. Apply appropriate maintenance resource. Yes.
Yeah, what is the purpose of putting sports?
Our mission. Assist the city in the development and maintenance of Port One property. Provide environmental. Assist the city. Assist the city. Our mission, that's our ten year partnership. I think it's been a great partnership. Let's see what we've been able to achieve. To get that many, the city, they'd be proud. It is to the degree you can't apply for anyone until you close them out. And I know you have plans over here, combined by Central Park, you know. And I've heard in the Parks Advisory Committee, you've got master plan going, you really have big parky, you have expanded activities and this and that. All that stems from. Uh, Oregon City Parks Grant Programs. Right, right way to do how well you're preparing the resource that. Don't want to talk more. Their inspection. So. Don't necessarily announce. Want to be the dead horse.
Thank you.
I mean, I promise I have.
All right. Now I'm just city manager.
Yes, uh, the only thing I have, I'm not a mayor, is I handed out to you. Well, that's right. I handed out to you, uh, something we've talked about for, well, just about a year. And that's our new agreement with the chamber, creating a, uh, a transit lodging tax unified committee. And that's, I just wanted to give it to you, that's the, the, uh, mayor management agreement we created with the chamber. And Jessica, uh, we, uh. Terminal in arms is here and will answer any questions you have, but, uh, as you know, Counselor Daigle. Council President Hamilton are part of that group. And, uh, it looks like it's going to be a. I think it's gonna work. Do you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I think it's going really well and we're really excited about the partnership with the city. And I think this is a really, a lot better approach for us, if those were comfortable for us, then we can use our funds in a better way to really promote the destination. While also offering this other side, um, to events and really anything that's transit launching task.
I just wanted you to have that and let you know on the record that, uh, it's been executed, so. But I have.
Thank you. On the city council comments, remember monthly meeting time is limited. Please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the group. Individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside the meeting. Counselor Daigle.
We turn to the homeless. Hear me?
Yes, congratulations. Top loud.
I'm loud.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, and regarding to the homeless situation, um. First of all, there were people asking questions tonight. And I think they just were asked, it was something they need to. But we spend a lot of time on this and. I sit here, I feel like I'm being sold on something. I don't know what I'm being sold on because we just talk about what's kind of happening, but. We need to have no solution. So I think maybe since we created this. Thing, it's gonna have to come together and, and create a committee or something to address it so. We have something to talk about. Listening to this report all the time. Raining actually. And anyhow, I, I hope that when you answer these questions for people that they're made public, for everybody knows what's going on, I think. The community needs to know what's happening. That's all I know.
Counselor Whitaker.
Yes, I guess as far as the homeless thing is concerned, I have to say that. We're under a obligation to obey the federal law. But what I've heard, what I've seen, the amount of work that's been put in by the city, by Wayne, by the folks out there. That's what we're doing. We used to have people sleeping on the street, we don't have that problem. Police are involved when they need to be, but we don't really have a prime. And isn't it better to have? A place for the homeless to go and to be taken care of and to be offered the services that they need. That's off the beaten path than it is to just allow them to go wherever they want, which is allowed by the law, if we won't offer them a place to live. So. And I think that. We're doing the best job that we can at this time with no funds being supplied by anybody except. The city, whatever money she can raise by people who are. That will happen.
Taking. Counselor Smalley.
It's a tough situation. I go back and forth. Originally, I was against it. I'm like. Bad idea, we're gonna invite more homeless people in. And now I have changed my mind. I think without it, I think it works off. Gives people a place to go, where you actually see them show up and put a face with the name and stuff, changing for me, so. I support it and to get behind everyone. So yeah.
Counselor Grossman. Counselor President Hamilton.
I agree with Counselor Whitaker. Um, it is a tough situation. But. We're required to do. And for them to have a place to go to. I mean, they're not on our street bench, on benches on the street. Um. It's a tough situation. But I think if we all come together and try to help the situation instead of just the complaining. I think that's important. And although probably not gonna be important or popular, my question is, what would Jesus do? And my compassion takes over and I, I, I feel for them. Probably there's lots of people in this room right now that are a paycheck away from being home. Especially with the way inflation is right. So I just hope we can all come together and make this work even better. And I, I thank Wayne and everybody that helps with it. Um, and I think the ones that are homeless to be here tonight, because I know that's gotta be hard on you. Thank you. I also want to, I didn't go anywhere Saturday, but I'm assuming the Lions put flags. So I want to thank the Lions for putting our flags up for veterans and thank you veterans.
You're welcome.
Counselor Woods.
Um, I also wanted to thank all of it. Protect our country. Um, we've had a lot of heartfelt discussions here tonight. Um, it's, it's really deep for many people, those who are experiencing homelessness. Those who are experiencing homelessness. Um, and it's not something we can do by ourselves. So it is going to take community to resolve the problem. And, um, you do need to have meaningful and productive conversations about. How we can make it better. And it means that when we first started this. With, uh, Houston Village. I was like, oh, this is not a good idea. But after seeing the residents come here, share what they're, what they're doing there. I think that there's, there's probably some great people there that are trying to get into a better situation. And then there's problems some there that are. Not trying to make a better situation as well, just like in communities all over. Um, but you know. Our business community, it's important for them to be able to open their doors. So having a place for them to go, because we're mandated by the night support. It's, it's important that there is a place that's designated so that they're not sleeping in our business doorways where businesses have been, uh, owned and operated. Um, so having that committee, like Counselor Whitaker suggested. And Council people, that might be a, a good opportunity to come together. And maybe come up with some solutions that might benefit what we're doing here to make what's going on better. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I, I thought everybody had some great input. Uh, I, I, I always have thought that having Houston Village has been a great. Um, great thing for our unhoused people. Uh, I think it's just been the right thing to do. For, for human beings in our town, for us to take care of, of our people, for them to have a place to go. Um, I, I just never thought it was a great thing to, the hurting. Environment, hurting, uh, thought and just moving people around, um, every day. For them not to have a, a, a place for them to stay, to feel safe. Uh, and, and for us to be able to offer services for, for people. Uh, which is not, they're not capable of getting that when they're being pushed around from, from site to site every morning. That's not an environment for people to get help if they, if they need it. For us to be able to, to give a hand up for our citizens that, that want it, I think is, is just. A, a human thing to do. And so I think it's great for us to do that. I really liked the idea, uh, that the gentleman had earlier about. Uh, people in our community that have, uh, grades. That might want to help and come together to help the community. And maybe come together and, and, uh, work through. And offer assistance to our homeless community, might be a great, great thing to try. I feel for that as well. And the last thing I wanted to just mention is, I have my coffee with the mayor every month. And I am not going to be having mine at December one, just because of the holidays while we start to back up. It's me. So on to public comment. So on to public comment. Uh, for the purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. And I have two of those, start with Karen Meyer.
Um, this is a concern that I, I saw actually on Facebook, um. A, a neighbor took on two different occasions of video of. Bust loads of men being dropped off at a residence. Was from there. Band's coming to pick up some of them. And go to two other different residents, I understand, and then in the particular residents, you think the movie, the video of. There are between twelve to twenty men. Living in that residence, thirteen hundred square feet, three bedrooms, one bathroom. And um, the building code two seven, I didn't bring my glasses, so embarrass me. Building code two seven one fifty, the home occupation site shall not be used as a headquarters for the assembly. Of employees for instruction or other purposes, including dispatch to other locations. And my understanding is that these men leave at five o'clock in the morning. Card hats, jogging boots, and where they go, I heard sometimes they were, they're very fun. And the reason it concerns me, first of all, I, what's happening next, certainly, I'd be livid. But it also concerns me because my daughter and um granddaughter went to a presentation by the FBI that said. That there's a lot of slave slavery going on right now from the cartels, and they're bringing these immigrants in. And they have to work off their passage with the cartel. And so we might, or we might not actually have slave labor. In the city, and I, you can look into it or not look into it. I'd be concerned about it. The other thing is, listening to, to everything, um. I think these gentlemen had the best idea, and it was an idea that we kind of started with, but then. Um, it is to deal with our Sutherland homeless people. And I think we have to have two separate. Two separate um. Ideas going here, we have to have one thing for the Sutherland people. And we have to have one thing for people coming in, out of the area where they are, because we don't want them to stay. We, we have enough to do, keep in touch with our Sutherland people. And. I don't think that a lot of people understand that, that, that we, that the ninth circuit doesn't say. That we have to take everybody forever. It, it says that we have to provide them a place between lawn and desk, so there are options that we can do.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, Bruce. Interfald. That guilt, I'm sorry.
I was right, I hadn't right it on, without any. Thank you, Bruce Bettinial, three zero one Hawthorne Street. Uh, two quick things, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna talk about tactic very quickly, but. As far as Hasting's Village is concerned, I am willing to help anybody who wants to be helped. Councilor Wood, you touched on it, you didn't specify it. And the problem is, not the people who are here, they care. It's the people who don't care, it's the people who are putting hypodermic needles along Hawthorne Street, Eddie Street, Johnson Street. Those are the people that, that people are complaining about, not these people. So, that long was there by Hasty. Anyway, uh, last month I was here and we talked about uh. Paying an urban renewal bill. With money from the water district. And that passed. And then. I'm gonna apologize again because my wife passed away in April, so I take a whole new look at all the stuff that comes in. And my property taxes came in. And I took a look at it. My three zero one Hawthorne, it's not, it's not very much, but it's my home. And it is pretty nice for my standards, yeah, I appreciate it, my wife loved it. Anyway, I get my tax bill, twenty one hundred dollars. For, for zero one Hawthorne Street. Tax value, hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. You wanna know what the percentage was that the city of Sutherland takes? Seventeen hundred and sixty seven dollars. Of that twenty one hundred dollar bill, for those two people. And then you use money from pot A to pay pot B. Urban renewal's in that tax. The water district fees that we're paying for that, for that new water plant are in those taxes. The school district gets six hundred dollars back. So the eleven hundred dollars is going up here for you guys to spend on urban renewal and other things. So, you know, I'm all good for government and providing for the people and all that. But you guys need to be responsible for our money. And I was not impressed with taking from the water district to pay urban renewal, when you're already getting tax money for urban renewal. Thank you.
I would love to have a town hall, have the time to, you know, to get into some of these topics in detail.
We'll answer all those questions.
Okay. So we will get some answers back from the questions that were presented tonight at the next, uh, the next city council. I wrote, I wrote, yeah. At this time, the council will take a five minute break before entering into executive session, called under O R S one ninety two point six six zero two I. Performance evaluations of public officers and employees. Review and evaluate the job performance of a chief executive officer, other officers, employees, and staff. Personally, performance being reviewed and evaluated does not reflect the interview experience presented as a media. Don't be allowed to attend the executive session, all of your members of the audit are asked to leave the room. And we will adjourn, uh, we will reconvene after this to um reconvene our council meeting. Thing of business, um. One item of business. Do I have a motion to uh. Accept. City manager resignation for January first, two thousand and twenty four. And accept uh. The agreement.
And my resigning? But it's not, it's just a new contract.
Oh, a new contract, okay, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm waiting, that's okay, to accept the new contract. Starting January first, two thousand and twenty four, as presented, employment agreement. Upset.
I made a motion that we do.
Any discussion, any discussion.
It's already started.
Any discussions.
That's a contract for one year till the end.
Two years.
Okay, till December of twenty twenty five.
Yes.
Okay, two years.
At the end of the session. Let's vote. Councilor Daigle.
Well, I guess, okay.
That's a new one.
Councilor Whitaker.
I.
Councilor Smalley. Councilor Groussman. That'd be you.
I.
Councilor Hamilton. Councilor Woods. Mayor Sumner.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Good call.
I was reading an email from uh Gary Fadnem, who thought he hurt my feelings when he said.
Thank you. Good night, Chad.
He said I would just get in.